Call this meeting of the Salem Housing Authority for January 13th to order. If the -- Recorder, please call a roll.
Commissioner Tesler, absent. Commissioner Nanki?
Here.
Commissioner Clausen?
Here.
Commissioner Dickey?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Benars?
Here.
Commissioner Clem?
Here.
Commissioner Hein?
Here.
Chair Bennett?
Here. If you'll draw me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Well, good, we haven't met like this in a while.
It's been over a month.
Yeah, that's been awhile. Do we have any public comment? We have no one signed up for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to address the housing authority? All righty. Counselor Nanki, will you leave?
No, just the chair that sent me down to the floor. Move the consent calendar, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, we have motion on the consent calendar. Are there any comments? Mr. Welch, do you have any highlights?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of quick comments you may have seen in the paper today about the family self-sufficiency grant that the housing authority received for $69,000. That's an ongoing program that we've had for years, and that's on the public housing, public housing resident support side. So, we're thrilled to have that, those funds. And I would just, on page three of seven of the business profile, just mention some of our milestones that we've achieved on the range of projects that we're working on. We, the partition of the Parkway Village Apartments is completed, and there's now Parkway West and Parkway East, two separate tax ID parcels. We were approved for an allocation of tax exempt volume cap from the treasurer's office, eight and a half million dollars. The carryover application, which guarantees, if you will, a commitment of the 9 percent tax credits that we're using on Parkway West. That carryover is finished. Tax credit application to Oregon Housing is in. We're working with Oregon Housing on the 4 percent tax credit side that we're using for the Robert Lindsay Tower. We have submitted a community development block grant to the city of Salem for additional funds. The schedule we're on is a closing of March 31. Particularly aggressive, we've done 12 months of work in six months, and the next three months will prove, I think, comparable to another 12 months feeling. But we're moving that way, and we're happy with that.
Well, the mathematics of that is we've got to cut you to a month, and we're done.
Yeah.
That's great. Are there any questions? All righty, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, passes. We have no special orders of business, unfinished business or new business, so without objection, we are adjourned.
Well done.
We have a little change of the guard here, as we do when we start with housing. Counselor Bennett is the chair of the housing, and I'm Mayor Anna Peterson, here to welcome you for this evening's meetings for the Urban Renewal Agency and the Salem City Council. We'll start with our Urban Renewal Agency meeting, which I will call to order, and ask for the recorder to please call the roll. Board Member Bennett?
Here.
Board Member Tesler, absent. Board Member Nanki?
Here.
Board Member Clausen?
Here.
Board Member Dickey?
Here.
Board Member Thomas?
Here.
Board Member Benars?
Here.
Board Member Clem?
Here.
Chair Peterson?
Here. Thank you very much. All right, we have no boards, commission, or committee reports this evening. Is anyone signed up for public comment? No. Was there anyone here this evening that wanted to be heard during public comment for our Urban Renewal Agency? Seeing none, we'll pass that along, and we'll entertain the consent calendar. Member Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar with the following poll, 4.3B by Bennett.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion before us for the approval of the consent calendar with the exception of the poll of 4.3B by Counselor, which Counselor, which member?
Bennett.
By Member Bennett. Thank you. I don't understand what you're -- all right, thank you. We need to practice our hieroglyphics or something here. Okay, so the motion before us is for the approval with the one poll. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, we have an information report I want to draw to your attention, and then under special orders of business, we'll deal with the item that was pulled, which is 4.3B. Member Bennett, do you have comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I want to move the staff recommendation.
Second.
And do you want to discuss your motion?
Just, just very briefly, this, this was covered in this morning's newspaper. This is the move by the Urban Renewal Agency to complete the property transaction on the McMahon and Les Newman sites. This is a major event for us. This has been a real struggle over the past several years since the fire that destroyed those two businesses to get this property redeveloped. It has sat graded for some time, and to now have a developer prepared to move forward on this is very exciting. I wanted to give Mr. Wales a chance if he had anything he wanted to report on this, sort of what's going on down there. I thought it was certainly worth highlighting.
For the record, I'm John Wales, Urban Development Director. This is an opportunity that about six or eight months ago, the Urban Renewal Board gave staff permission to go ahead and secure the smaller of those two parcels, and which we did, and for the purpose of trying to get this property into play and into development. And we've been working with a developer who would like to develop whole site, and so this is an opportunity for that to happen, and it's a mixed-use development that's being proposed. If you read the purchase and sale agreements, there are some incentives. The sooner the developer can come in and make the development happen, the less they would pay ultimately for the property. But there are some requirements that the property, 90 percent of the entire site be developed. There's a minimum square footage that is put into the, to the agreement. They can do more. And it be a mixed use with at least two of several uses, a commercial component, a housing or hotel component, and retail component. And we're very excited, we're very excited with the development that's being proposed, and we look forward to them securing tenants and financing and moving forward with this.
Madam Mayor, I hope this is the first of several of these announcements over the next year, as we move forward on, moving out of the recession and moving forward on redevelopment of these properties in the downtown area. It's very exciting.
Wonderful. Good. Thank you, Mr. Wales, for that report, and also for Member Bennett for drawing that really to all of our special attention by pulling the item. So, the motion before us is to approve the staff recommendation. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We have no unfinished business for the agency board, and no public hearings, and no new business, so this meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency is closed. You ready? Okay. All right, I'd like to call to order this evening's meeting for January 13, 2014, of the Salem City Council. We are now in session. Would the recorder please call the roll? Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Tesler, absent. Counselor Nanki?
Here.
Counselor Clausen?
Here.
Counselor Dickey?
Here.
Counselor Thomas? Here.
Counselor Benars?
Here.
Counselor Clem?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here. Thank you. Our first order of business this evening is the election of our council president, which is an annual election held among the members of the city council. And I believe we have a motion from Counselor Clem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the city council appoint Counselor Bennett as council president for the calendar year 2014.
All right. And it's been seconded, it's a motion by Counselor Clem and seconded by Counselor Dickey to appoint Councilmember Chuck Bennett as council president for the year 2014. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And my comment is, thank you again, Chuck, Counselor Bennett, for being willing to serve as our council president. You have done so since I became mayor three years ago, and have done a stellar job, and I've appreciated so much. You being my right hand and my left hand, and being the conduit so many times to all of the counselors as we are preparing for these meetings, as well as discussing major issues. And I want to thank you for the extra service that you're providing for us. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. I enjoy it very much, so thank you.
Do you have an election speech that you'd like to?
No, I really don't. I will say that, because I've discovered you get more votes if you keep your mouth shut here.
Oh, indeed, well, that's good.
I don't know if that works at most levels. Yeah.
All right, we'll remember that. Thank you very much. Okay, we do need a motion for approval of additions and deletions. I did see an addition/deletion page in front of us this evening.
Madam Mayor, I move additions, deletions, and corrections to the agenda.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars to approve the additions/deletions/revisions page for the council meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We have comment now by city council members and by our city manager. Do counselors have any comments this evening that they'd like to share? I have one that I would like to share, and that is that last week on, let me see if I can pull up the date real quickly, on Tuesday, January 7th, was the inaugural meeting of the Mayor's International Council. And I was very pleased and heart warmed that, I believe, 15 of the 17 seats that have been appointed were able to attend and participate in our inaugural meeting, and we feel very much like an international city having inaugurated the council and look forward to bringing information from the council forward to the city and to the city council, as we really begin a, a more heartfelt, I think, and more active role with all of the cultural and ethnic and religious organizations throughout the city. So, I was very pleased with the beginning of that very important effort. Counselor Benars?
I just have a thank you for the city of Salem Police Department. I had a situation this last weekend where I called a non-emergency number, and within just a few minutes, we had three police officers, we had people trespassing, and, but they took, took care of the problem professionally. It makes my clients, my tenants, happy because they're no longer trespassing on the property. And I just want to say thank you, Captain Jerry, and everyone else that's in the police department.
All right, other further comments?
Just, just one, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Just to welcome back our city manager. Although we were all on vacation, we missed not being able to visit with you while you were on leave, and it's really good to have you back. Really glad to see you.
Thank you. It's wonderful to be back.
Good.
Thanks.
You were missed. I'm very happy to have you back. Do you have comments this evening?
Well, there is one thing I'd like to talk about. We're nearing completion of the Commercial Street Bridge and the pathways that will go under the bridge, and I just wanted to thank Public Works for the tremendous job they've done on that project. The sidewalks are not open to the public yet. We still need to put up handrails and other things, but I think it's going to be one of people's favorite places in downtown Salem. So, really appreciate the wonderful job and the great design.
All right, thank you very much. I have a proclamation to present this evening, and I'm going to stand and read it, just really out of respect and reverence for Dr. Martin Luther King, and the person, who is the person that we are actually honoring on Monday as a national holiday. Whereas January 20th, 2014, is celebrated nationally and by the city of Salem as the observance of the birthday of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and whereas Dr. Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. is recognized as a leader in the movement to establish civil and human rights for all people, and whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. focused on building peaceful communities based upon equality and justice, and whereas the city of Salem has reaffirmed the personal liberties of its citizens and does not tolerate any violation of their civil and human rights, and whereas we join the world on observing the 50th anniversary of the pivotal speech "I Have a Dream" on August 28, 2013, and whereas the celebration of the life of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. helps honor those who contributed to Salem's diverse history and culture, and whereas the recognition and study of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s life and work helps assure a rich and diverse community future. Now therefore, I, Anna M. Peterson, Mayor of the city of Salem, Oregon, do hereby proclaim the day of January 20th, 2014, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Recognition in Salem in honor and celebration of the contributions of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and I urge all residents to reflect and learn about his work, so that the community of Salem will continue to uphold and respect the civil and human rights of every individual. This proclamation is dated the 13th day of January, 2014. We often have organizations or individuals who come to us to accept proclamations. In this case, this proclamation is actually going to be presented to two organizations that seat on the Mayor's International Council, the NAACP and the Oregon Black Pioneers. So, they'll be receiving copies of this starting tomorrow. Okay, we have time for public comment. I'm not certain if we have individuals signed up for public comment this evening. No one signed up. Is there anyone here this evening that did come and wanted to present during this public comment time? This is for items, agenda items, other than public hearings and deliberations. All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the consent calendar. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar with the following polls, 3.2B and C by Counselor Dickey, 3.3B by Counselor Nanki, and that's what I have. Is there, I don't think there are any others.
All right. Is there a second to the consent calendar? Did I hear a second? Oh, thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki to approve the consent calendar with the polls of 3.2B and C and item 3.3B. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We'll now proceed to public hearings. We have two public hearings this evening. The first one is the reopened hearing for the deliberation regarding denial of a vehicle for hire agency license. Would the, does the recorder introduce this, or do you?
She does.
She does. All right, our city recorder will make an announcement.
The city council will now reopen the November 4th, 2013, hearing for the purpose of deliberations only regarding denial of vehicle for hire agency license.
All right, and our city attorney, Dan Atchison, has a statement.
Just to let the public and the counselors know, there will be no testimony taken. You're only proceeding with deliberations tonight. Also, I'm aware that at least some of the counselors had received a letter from the applicant, and just to let you know, the applicant, the letter will not be included into the record. If you haven't read it, don't read it. To the extent it constitutes ex parte contacts, the only person who could object to that would be the applicant himself, and since he made the contact, it's, it's not procedural issue.
All right, thank you very much. And do we have a staff report?
Madam Mayor, there is no staff report. The staff, the previous written staff reports have been included into your packet, but we're not giving you any new information at this point, since it's just a recon, reconsideration based on the record before you.
All right. So, do we entertain a motion at the beginning of this?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Bennett, is there a motion for this item?
This is a motion for reconsideration.
The motion for reconsideration's already been made, so either we make it a motion to grant the agency license or deny the agency license.
I move the city council deny the agency license.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Clem to deny the agency license to, for the vehicle for hire agency license. Is there further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, will the nays please raise their hands? All right. The recorder will note the, the nay votes of Counselor Nanki, Counselor Clausen, and Counselor Benars. All right, then the motion does, Counselor Thomas, did you vote? And did you vote in the affirmative, or did you vote no?
In favor.
In favor of denying the license?
Of the motion on the floor.
That's the motion that's on the floor. I'm unclear.
So, it'd be 5-3.
Counselor Thomas, just to, just to clarify, did you vote in favor of the motion which would deny the license?
In favor of giving the license.
Okay.
Do we need to restate the motion?
Could I have the maker of the motion restate it?
Yeah, the motion is to deny the license.
Second.
And can we confirm the votes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 So, there are four to four.
In order to, this is essentially an appeal of a, of an administrator's decisions to, in order to overturn the administrator's decision, you would need positive number of votes, and since you don't have it at this point, the administrator's decision to deny the license would be affirmed, so that in, in essence, the license would be denied.
Was that the administrator's decision?
Yes.
I'm uncertain.
Do you want to differ?
I apologize, but I am uncertain. I'm going to ask for some clarification from the city attorney.
So, there were two license applications by the applicant, one for the driver and one for the agency. The administrator denied both licenses. Those were appealed to the city council. And so, in order to reverse the lower decision, you need a majority of votes, the council, and since you don't have that, the lower decision stands.
Do you, I have just a question.
Counselor Bennett?
Though, I think part of the confusion is that the motion's a negative motion. Would you prefer a positive motion? I mean, is that, what's the problem is here, or it doesn't matter?
I don't think it'll make a difference, since you're at a 4-4.
You won't change the vote, but does it clarify what we're doing here? Guess not.
Basically, we do nothing, and the previous decision carries over.
Okay.
Okay. Counselor Clem, did you have a question or comment?
I just want to confirm, the administrator's decision was to deny the license.
Right.
And the administrator is the city manager or the chief of police?
No. No, the hearings officer.
Community Development Director. Community Development Director.
Community Development Director, who normally issues these lines. Okay, I just want to make sure we know what we voted on.
Okay. All right, so in summation, the, the vote this evening is four to four, and with a tie vote, then the hearings officer's decision is the decision that will stand, and that decision is to not deny the license to the vehicle for hire application. All right, our second public hearing is on ordinance bill number 2413. Would the recorder please introduce the ordinance?
The city council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of considering adoption of ordinance bill number 24-13 relating to establishing new Salem Revised Code, Chapter 703, wireless communications facilities. Failure to raise admission in the hearing in person or by letter, or failure to provide statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, recludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the proposal. The city council shall grant such requests by continuing the public hearing or leaving the record open for additional written evidence, arguments, or testimony.
Thank you. And I believe we have a staff presentation?
Yes, we do.
Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and counselors. I'm Pamela Cole, Associate Planner. I'd also like to introduce our consultant, Pam Berry, with Berry Elsener-Hammond. She'll be able to answer questions for you this evening. I'd like to introduce the staff report, attachments, and this presentation into the When our existing codes were developed about 16, 17 years ago, cell towers, antennas, and equipment were not commonly thought of as useful and necessary. Most people were just using cell phones for occasional calls when they were on the road, not for home phones. Nowadays, everyone's using cell phones for home phones, often replacing their landlines. We're using smartphones for wireless technology, and everything from streaming to data for text messages. When the internet exploded and everyone started using all of these new applications, it became apparent to the wireless carriers that they were going to need to provide many more antenna to support the new technologies and to provide the data that people are requesting. Several years ago, several wireless carriers approached the city and asked if they could start putting more antenna on utility poles in right-of-way. At that time, we found that our code didn't adequately address those types of facilities, so we negotiated several right-of-way use agreements, and we included standards such as height and design. Those types of agreements typically aren't used for zoning standards, and staff recommended that we change our existing zoning code to include standards for those types of installations. And along with that, the planning commission initiated the code amendment, and staff began working on updates to the code, just to bring it into the modern era. We also have new provisions that would provide additional opportunities for service to residential areas, because people are demanding that more and more. And we also consolidated a lot of the application procedures and other features from the previous code. code into one chapter. We also added a lot of design standards to improve visual compatibility. The wireless carriers in previous hearings have testified that they're getting a lot more demand for residential service. And again, that's because people are wanting to use broadband technology at home, not just in the office. They're using the technologies not only for entertainment, but also for business purposes. So all of that means we need more antenna, and that also means we need to use more sites and to provide that additional data. So we anticipate that this is going to continue to increase as more and more applications become available, and people are beginning to rely more and more on those types of services. In this zoning map, you can see that much of the city is residential. Those zones are indicated in pale green, yellow, and orange. And the red areas indicate commercial zones. Some purple also are commercial. Some of the other purple areas indicate industrial zones. Where most of the carriers are requesting towers approximately 70 feet in height or taller, so that the signals can clear the existing buildings and trees and terrain, we allow that height in most of the commercial and other non-residential zones that you indicate -- that you could see here indicated. Typically, those run along the major commercial corridors and separate the residential zones. It might seem from the map that we have a lot of sites that would work, but we also have provisions that limit that. In this area, the purple areas indicate the only areas in town where a new cell tower over 35 feet in height could be approved without a variance to a 300-foot setback that applies to residential and commercial office zones. So as you can see, we took a lot of the commercial industrial areas, particularly the corridors on major streets, out of the equation. And if someone wants to provide a service along that area with a new cell tower, they also have to obtain a variance. And we anticipate that situation's going to increase as well, as the carriers are continually trying to provide more service to those residential areas. So back in 1997, when the Planning Commission adopted the 300-foot setback, they thought that it was appropriate then, because most people weren't using cell phones, and certainly not for the applications we have today. So most of the public thought that the cell towers were new. They were popping up all over town. They seemed to be creating a visual nuisance, and they thought they were uglier than other types of tall structures, such as utility poles. People perceived those to be more necessary. The Planning Commission then did make that standard variable so that we wouldn't be prohibiting service to the carriers who were needing to provide it. So with the increased demand for residential services, we find we're getting more and more variance applications, and we anticipate that situation would continue if we keep the 300-foot setback. So one of the proposals in the code is to decrease that setback from 300 feet to 30 feet. We would also be proposing to increase the heights that are allowed for cell towers in residential zones, so that they would be equal to the heights that we would allow for non-residential structures in the residential zones. For example, if the current code would allow a library that's 50 feet tall in a single-family residential zone, the proposal would allow a cell tower that's 50 feet tall in a single-family residential zone. Now, while those two are very significant changes, we're also proposing quite a few protections for the residential areas to balance that. And these provisions are similar to the provisions we currently obtain through conditions of approval for the cases that are requesting and receiving approval for variances after they prove the need for the variance. So those types of conditions include landscaping and irrigation, screening, which is typically a fence or a wall, and also, these must comply with noise standards. So those would be features of the new code that would apply to all new support towers. In addition, a new support tower that's within 300 feet of a residential zone would also be required to be designed in a manner so that it appears as a tree or other natural feature, or a building or structure that would be allowed in a zone. While the previous variance conditions, we've primarily ended up with the tree designs. It's the one on the left. We would also encourage, through the proposed code, other solutions such as clock towers, bell towers, and flagpoles. More of a variety that would fit better with the surroundings. The ordinance also offers more opportunity for public participation. Currently, some cell towers can go through a process that does not involve public input at all. The new code would require a public hearing process for all new support towers, and as well as substantial changes to existing towers. The ordinance also has a feature that would allow us to be able to confirm that the applicants truly need to site a proposed tower in a residential zone and certain other area zones. We would require the applicant to pay the cost of an independent third-party review, and that would be applicable to all cases that would request adjustments from the proposed standards in the code, and also to all new cell towers in residential zones, and new cell towers within 300 feet of the residential zones. Furthermore, the process for siting in a residential zone with a new support tower is the most rigorous in the entire code. In addition to providing the regular information that all the applications have to provide, the applicants for new towers in these zones also have to show it's the least intrusive means of filling a significant gap in coverage, and they would also have to document that they've exhausted all the other opportunities and possibilities in our priority system, which I'll explain next. To encourage the lowest impact on existing development, our first priority is to attach antennas to existing structures. That could include things such as the water tower, and also buildings, and also existing cell towers or freestanding support structures. Another option would be to attach antenna to an existing utility pole, whether in right-of-way or on private property. So it works from first priority, the most preferred, which are the attaching antennas to existing structures, priority one, down to priority four, which is the least preferred, and that would be a new cell tower. So any applicant for a lower priority, two, three, or four, has to prove that they have no way of citing through a higher priority. The second priority is to replace an existing utility pole with a taller utility pole that can support antenna. And in this case, we would be gaining the opportunity for public comment on these types of cases when they're in right-of-way, in the right-of-way use agreements. We didn't have that opportunity. The proposed code would allow public comment within a notice period, and we'd post the sites as well. Third priority would be substantial change to an existing support tower. And fourth, again, is constructing a new support tower. Public hearings would be required for both of those types of applications. And again, to construct a new tower in a residential zone, they would have to prove that it's the least intrusive way to cite it, and they also have to show that they're filling a significant gap, plus show that they can't locate at a higher priority site. Again, we have the ability to require the independent third-party review, so that we could have confidence that the applicants' applications truly prove that need. In crafting the ordinance and also in reviewing the wireless facilities, the city does have certain responsibilities according to federal law. Primarily, we can't prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting wireless services, so that means we can't be so restrictive that we give no option of providing service where it's needed. We also can't make regulations on the basis of radio frequency emissions that meet the federal standards. We also have to act on requests within a reasonable period of time. That's 90 days for co-location, which is an attachment of antenna, and up to 150 days for a new tower. The federal government has responded to some of the wireless industry's demands and requests for some relief from some local standards they've found to be too restrictive. And recently, we've had Section 6409, which has required local jurisdictions to approve certain co-locations. And we're also in the process now of formulating a response to the rulemaking for that proposal. So we anticipate it's possible that the federal government could even reduce other local ability to respond to these types of applications and take some of that authority away to the federal level. So we feel that it's really critical for us to have a reasonable strategy that allows for the service, but still keeps protections for local concerns. So we find that the update of the existing code is necessary, because technology has changed so much. It's going to continue to evolve. We'll need more antenna for more data, and this is going to result in increased needs in residential areas. We feel that we're responding to that need that the carriers have expressed. We're also responding to concerns from the community by allowing more opportunities for public participation that we have in the past. We're having the siting priority to encourage the antennas to be located in the least intrusive ways, and only allow them on new towers when it's absolutely necessary, particularly in residential areas. We're adding design standards that really reduce the visual impacts far beyond how we have regulated those before. And last but not least, we've also made sure that the proposal is clearer than the previous codes, and it's formatted to be consistent with the Unified Development Code that's moving forward. Therefore, staff recommends that council advance the enshrined ordinance to second reading for enactment.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your report. And I will now open the public hearing for testimony. All people testifying on this item have three minutes. Do we have people signed up? We do. Okay. Meridie Papst, followed by Kurt Fisher. Welcome. At the end of two minutes, the amber light comes on, and at the end of three minutes, the red light comes on.
Thank you for the warning, Madam Mayor.
And state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mayor Peterson and city councilors. My name is Meridie Papst. I'm from Bush Law Firm, thir -- excuse me, 93 South Jackson Street, number 75604, Seattle, Washington, 981104. And I'm speaking tonight on behalf of AT&amp;T. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. We did email a letter earlier today with some written comments, and I hope you had a chance to see those. Before I talk about our two issues that we wanted to touch on tonight, I did want to thank staff. This was a complex project, as Ms. Cole just explained, and it involved balancing a lot of different interests, and we believe it's a good final product that's before you here tonight. Our two issues that we also addressed in our letter are setbacks and then also system capacity. Ms. Cole did an excellent job explaining the reasoning for the proposed changes in setbacks, and I'll just leave my comments to support what she already said, and if you have any questions about my letter, I'd be happy to answer. Our second concern is that the ordinance previously had references to system capacity as a basis for the carrier demonstrating the need for a new facility. We're concerned that these were recently removed, and we believe they should remain in the ordinance. We do understand that the city's consultant was concerned that system capacity wasn't defined in the ordinance, and it might be difficult to administer the code for this reason. We note that coverage isn't defined either, and examples in the code showing a lack of coverage are also examples of a potential lack of capacity. These concepts are interrelated. They're both directly related to the quality of service that customers have in a particular location, and they're both relevant to showing a need for additional infrastructure. Something I hadn't mentioned earlier that I think is important is the city has incorporated a section requiring independent third-party review. So it won't be city staff necessarily deciding whether a need for capacity is shown. It would be the independent third-party reviewer who's hired for that expertise. Last, I did want to mention specifically, in-building coverage very clearly should continue to be relevant under the code for demonstration of a need for a new facility. There's federal case law directly on point on this question. And again, as Ms. Cole said, the trend is away from landlines and towards wireless communications. In-building coverage is now the standard. It's what the customers expect, and we ask that your code be consistent with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate you coming. Are there questions by any councilors? All right. Seeing none, thank you again for your testimony.
Thank you.
All right. Kurt Fisher, followed by Joan Lloyd.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council.
Welcome.
I'm Kurt Fisher. I'm at 680 LaFell Street Southeast, and I'm testifying tonight on behalf of the SCAN Board. I'm the vice president and the chair of the Land Use Committee. We support much of the intent of the ordinance that's before you. We appreciate that there's a third-party review. We appreciate the fact that there's more opportunity for a more open public process regarding these siting decisions. But we do have specific concerns that mostly support what Nenn had raised during the Planning Commission process, and we relied significantly on the input that they gave to the Planning Commission when formulating our testimony. We'd like to see the setbacks remain as they are at 30 feet. We'd like to see the public comment period go to 30 days. 14 days is just too short for us to formulate informed testimony. We meet monthly, and we need sufficient time to absorb these complex issues and formulate informed testimony. We'd like -- we noticed that the auxiliary equipment is required to be placed down underground in historic districts, and we'd like to see those standards expanded to all residential areas. And we'd like to see the 30-foot -- the 35-foot height limit preserved. In our deliberations, we appreciate the fact that there's a balancing act between the height of the towers versus the number of towers and the density of the towers. And those points were raised that perhaps we can, if we raise the height, perhaps we can get better coverage and do with less towers. But looking through the information that came out of the Planning Commission, we simply didn't have much hard data or evidence of any analysis to really make that determination on our own. Perhaps that would come out in the comment period or any other form, but I think if there were -- if there were more evidence that would make that decision easier, I think there might be room to compromise there. But other than that, thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Mr. Fisher? Yes. Counselor Clem.
Hi, Kurt. Hey, thanks for coming down and sharing comments with us. Can you just reiterate real quick the auxiliary piece about, you want to see all auxiliary equipment underground regardless whether it's historic or not? Is that?
Correct.
Okay.
If it's in a residential area, we'd like to see it placed underground.
Which means you don't want to see it at all above ground?
Yes.
You don't care where it goes?
We want the same -- the same standards that we have, that are in the proposal for historic areas. We'd like to see that, the same standards through all residential areas.
Okay. Well, we'll have to ask if that's possible, but yeah, thanks for sharing.
Well, I did notice in the staff report that there was some -- there seemed to be some clarification on that, that you proposed to put them underground where other utilities were required to be underground. So -- and we appreciate, we appreciate, you know, movement on that point.
Okay. Good. Thanks.
Other questions for Mr. Fisher? All right. Thank you very much. All right. Joan Lloyd, followed by Nancy McDaniel.
Good evening, Nancy.
Good evening.
And councilors, and I live at 1577 Court Street Northeast, and that's part of Nenn. And I would ask you to please keep the distance of the cell towers no closer than 100 feet, and the setback for the auxiliary equipment to be at least 35 feet away from property line, residential property line. The heights stay at 35 feet, and that there be no adjustments to those. I feel as though all the cell towers and the three in recent months that have been approved are decisions made approved or decisions made on these or variances made on these might mean there's going to be a proliferation of towers in residential areas, especially looking at the map before. And talking about new technology, I mean, it's not only the way these towers are going to look, but they're small cell technology that's available now. And it's going to be there about the size of bricks, and they're going, they can go on utility poles, existing utility poles. I even read right before I came, when I did a search on small cell technology, that can be self-installed, and that they will cover two to five phones in a residence, in a house. And so, and they are supposed to support these huge cell towers, so there should be able to be fewer of them. So I would ask you to, you know, do some more research on that and see if that would cut down on the use of these taller towers. And I think that, you know, that would be a much better solution. And I also just wonder, a remark about a third-party review. And I'm just wondering, my question is, has there ever been a time when a third party who is being paid would ever say that something is not good? If you understand what I mean. So, I mean, I would think they would go along with the person who paid them, but it's just my opinion. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Lloyd? Well, we appreciate you coming and testifying. Nancy McDaniel, followed by Bill Howard.
Hello, my name is Nancy McDaniel. I'm the Land Use Chair for NEN, so I'm here testifying on behalf of NEN. I live at 265 21st Street Northeast Salem. So I think most of our concerns have already been stated, so I'll go over it real briefly. We are opposed to reducing the setback to 30 feet from a residential zone. 30 feet is nothing. We were suggesting instead 100 feet. And as Joan noted, the auxiliary equipment, right now, under the proposed ordinance, it would be 15 feet from the residential property line. And the auxiliary equipment is what houses the air conditioner, the generator, the noise, the noisy equipment. The maximum height, this is a real, this is an issue, I think, the maximum height being raised to 50 feet or 70 feet, depending in residential zones. When I, I understand from talking to Pamela Cole that the reason why we really haven't had cell towers before in residential areas is because at 35 feet, it's just not worth it. There's no coverage, and the companies aren't interested in being, in building it. So raising that level really opens up residential areas for cell tower development. And really, we're really worried about the impact this is going to have on our neighborhoods. When we had one of the cell tower providers come and talk to our neighborhood association, and he mentioned the lease on one of these, if you lease the property, you can get $1,200 a month. And I think that's a pretty good incentive for some residential property owners to consider putting one of these in their backyard. Joan mentioned also, and it could be possible putting it in their backyard if they get an adjustment, you know, that we've learned before, an adjustment doesn't necessarily, I mean, the standards, the setbacks, the maximums don't necessarily mean anything. And then finally, I'd like to point out the section on third-party review, which I think is really important, but that part of the proposed ordinance doesn't have any teeth in it. There are no requirements anywhere in that section for that third-party review. And what we were proposing in our letter is that it should be required under certain circumstances, for example, when you're putting a tower in a residential area. And we would, I think that would also be important just to, so that there's consistent application of the third-party review, rather than leaving it open to look like it's being somehow arbitrarily imposed. So we would argue for setting clear criteria on when the third-party review would be required. So that concludes my testimony.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Are there questions? All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate you coming and testifying. Bill Howard. And Mr. Howard, if you'd please just introduce yourself, state your address or ward and your name.
Certainly. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Bill Howard. I'm a project manager with Odilia Pacific Corporation, 90570 Southeast Washington Street, Suite 200 in Portland, 97210. Odilia Pacific Corporation is a development contractor for T-Mobile West LLC in the state of Oregon and also in the state of Washington, and I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of T-Mobile. I want to thank the staff as well as the planning commission for the enormous amounts of effort that have gone into this. I understand that these are always contentious, and you still see some of that contention here this evening. In the larger respect, though, we as carriers are all here working for what the demand is that you have right here inside the city. We have so long changed away from urban core demands, traffic demands, we're now into 3G, voice, data, and broadband, and that demand is coming from the residential areas. So a lot of questions have been coming up about why are we in the residential areas? It's because our customers are right there. And my time is limited, but 35, just in general, the 35-foot height, it's not because we don't want to do them, 35 feet particularly, particularly in a heavily vegetated or terrain areas like this, 35 feet gives us no propagation. We can't make that site work. So to get the services where we have to get them, where your customers, our customers are, where your constituents are, means we have to be in these residential areas, and I think Pamela addressed that in her remarks earlier. I, too, have about three topics I want to cover, first of which is the federal standards under Section 6409. Pamela mentioned that as one of the areas where there are some national constraints on what local jurisdictions can do. It's not just the city of Salem. This is true across the entire nation, where there is less than a substantial change, which is a federal definition, then the cities and local jurisdictions are essentially required to approve that. That was thoroughly vetted before the planning commission here. I see unfortunately that as engrossed before tonight, there are additional standards imposed on that, not only the federal standard, but also a minimal design standard, which I think conflicts with the federal standard and lays the seeds for problems going ahead. I also agree with what the representative said from AT&amp;T. She fully addressed the question of coverage versus capacity. That was also vetted and investigated by the planning commission. It's disappointing to see all those references of capacity being taken out of the bill that you have here before you tonight. Capacity issues are fully 70 to 80 percent of what we're doing here right now. That is not spreading new coverage out into areas that are underserved. We're at capacity. We're overextended with what our customers are demanding, and we need infill sites. So to enact an ordinance that doesn't recognize capacity is to take away what everybody wants from this, both the city and the carriers itself as far as clear standards. A lot has been said about the outside consultants. I agree to the extent that what we would like to see on that is a limitation on those fees, because right now they are completely unlimited. My time's up, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions by any of the councilors? Counselor Clem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Howard, if setbacks for the tower were 100 feet as opposed to 30 feet, as opposed to 300 feet, does that mean fewer higher towers when you go to 100 feet?
That's a hard, that's a complicated question to give an answer to, because when you say a tower, are we talking about all possible, all possible structures where you can attach an antenna? Are we talking about a brand-new self-support wireless communication tower? If you can give me an example, I can answer that, but I can't sit there and say that uniformly across the board, you know, something might work this way. I will say this, for the reasons I just discussed, our growth, our demand, the things that we're trying to accomplish are right there in the residential areas. And the farther you push us out, the shorter you drop that height, the farther you push us out, the more difficult it makes it for everybody to get the services that are being demanded right there, right now. And that is in-building, particularly residential, voice, data, and broadband. And the farther we get away from that, the shorter we drop that out, the more difficult you make it to get those services in, the more you escalate the costs of the network improvements that are needed, and the more you delay this kind of deployment throughout the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Mr. Howard, we appreciate you coming and testifying. Was there anyone else here this evening in the chambers that had come to testify and wasn't able to get their name on the list? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the questions of staff if we have any.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, I think that we do questions of staff and then close the hearing. Okay.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's right. Okay. Counselor Bennett.
Yes, I wanted to clarify the use of the third-party review. It was testified, the testimony was that this is not mandatory and that it is paid for by the party-making application. Is that correct? It is?
Yes, that's correct. So we would have the ability to have council enact a fee schedule so that we could require the applicant in certain cases to pay for the cost of the third-party review. And we've limited the circumstances to cases involving adjustments and cases involving the new towers and residential in certain other zones and within 300 feet of those areas. We have not said they absolutely have to be done in every case. It's going to be up to discretion.
But, but it would be in every case where they are within 300 feet of a residential zone?
It means we would have the ability to ask for that, but as was currently written.
How do I get that? Let me, let me give you an example. I own a house with a vacant lot next door on 18th and Nebraska. I just heard that I could get $1,200 a month for putting a cell tower in my vacant lot. Would that trigger a third-party review to determine if that's the appropriate location? If I can meet all setback requirements and all the rest of it?
Well, we would have the ability to request the third-party review.
Now, but would it occur routinely?
I believe in residential, because that is a last priority that staff would support doing those in those circumstances. But the wording currently doesn't say it's mandatory. They're correct.
Okay. So it's at staff discretion?
Staff discretion. We would be taking input. This would be during the time we've been, we'd be getting comments, and we have to determine the timing to work best for that process.
And then just finally, Madam Mayor, has there been third-party review of the information provided by the industry relative to these changes, where we just had this discussion of would there be fewer large towers if a tall tower were built? I mean, has there been a third-party review of all this information that has been provided by the industry so that as a council we can make an informed judgment away from just the information that is technical provided by the industry? Do we have that kind of technical support on this?
We have been drafting this. We have had third-party review, if you could term it that way, from our consultant, too.
But the technical side?
The technical, we haven't had an RF engineer.
So we don't know if a word of what we're being told is true based on a third-party review of the information in terms of tower location, the need for towers to meet these, this alleged demand and all the rest of this? Do we have any kind of third-party review that authenticates that testimony?
Other than our attorney, we have not in this process.
All right. I believe that Glenn Gross, Community Planning, has a comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Glenn Gross, Community Development Department. I just wanted to clarify, Pamela, a couple of things, if you would. If a new facility, a new tower was going into a residential vacant lot in a residential zone, that would not be an administrative decision, is that correct?
Right. It would be third-party, or third, type 3, sorry, terminology here. It would be a class 3 application, which is a type 3 process involving a public hearing.
So there'd be a public hearing by the hearing officer, that decision would be reviewable by the city council?
That's correct.
So ultimately, if the council chose to impose third-party review, and it hadn't been already imposed, that ultimately that would be the council's discretion. I just wanted to point that out. Secondly, to clarify, while the applicant is paying a fee that funds the third-party review, the actual relationship would be between the staff and the third-party reviewer, is that correct?
That's correct. We would be going out with a request for qualifications to obtain information from suitable candidates, and we'd evaluate that, and I believe we'd have Mrs. Berry help us with the review on that as well, if we request.
All right. I have questions by councilors. I'm not sure who was first here. Shall we start with Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple, if I could. Could we make the third-party review mandatory for any class 3, 4, 5, and 6? I think there were five or six levels. Couldn't we make it mandatory?
You certainly could. That would be a policy decision.
And coverage and capacity, boy, there's a real reason we didn't wade into that. I'm sure there's a really good one. Pamela, somebody help me understand what minefield we're avoiding by not addressing capacity and coverage.
Counselor, I am Pam Berry, for the record. I am the land use and telecommunications legal consultant that's been supporting staff throughout this project. So yes, the capacity and coverage are terms of art in the industry. The reason that I had concerns about using the term "capacity" as a method of determining whether there's a need for a facility is that it isn't a defined term, whereas the other terms that we use frequently are defined by about 25 years of case law at this point. So we have a very good understanding of what is a significant gap in service, for example, and we have a really good understanding of what would be a barrier to entry, what alternatives must be demonstrated. There are cases that describe those things. I've been unable to locate any case that discussed and no FCC definition that would clarify what capacity means. So I had concerns with staff's ability to administer, for example, how many busy signals an hour do we require? Do we drop calls? What is the mechanism for determining it? As a policy matter, it's your call, really, but there's no way to quantify it, and so it would be difficult to administer.
Okay. And thank you. One last quick one. Why 300 feet? Why is, whoever, why is staff recommending the change from 30?
30.
From 300 feet to 30?
300 feet is now excessive, and when we did research to find out what other cities are enacting for their setbacks, we didn't find any that were that large. And it's, as you saw on the map, because of that 300-foot setback from the residential and commercial office zones, it eliminates so many of the otherwise suitable sites that it requires a variance, and increasingly, we would be seeing more and more of those. And with the proposed code, we would be achieving most of what we've been receiving through variance cases before when they demonstrated that they needed the variances. We'd be getting all the landscaping, irrigation, screening, and also the camouflage automatically for those situations within 300 feet. So we're accomplishing the same, but through a different method. And they also, of course, have to prove that they need that, because it's the most difficult type of siting, and they have additional criteria that they have to prove for the significant gap and least intrusive needs.
So is there data that supports or refutes that 100 feet would work and still provide a great variety of sites to be considered?
It would improve from the 300. Of course, it wouldn't have the same impact as 30.
Sure.
All right. I believe Counselor Claussen also had indicated earlier that he asked a question.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Cole, in your presentation, you mentioned that in a residential area, a tower could not exceed the maximum structural height allowed inside that area. What is the maximum height allowed in, I mean, what could the tallest a tower ever be in a residential area?
It depends on the zones. Some of the zones have, if you don't mind, I can pull that, just one of them.
Yeah, it's an interesting question.
But then you get the church. What's that?
Church.
Yeah.
I think maybe specifically if there's a lot of numbers, if it's real quick, but you could, I'd be interested in all of them, but specifically, say, in RS. I think maybe specifically if there's a lot of numbers, if it's real quick, but you could, I'd be interested in all of them, but specifically, say, in RS, you know, for a standard single-family residential zone?
Okay, so now, the current maximum cell tower height is 35 feet, and the current non-residential structure height in that zone is 50 feet, so the proposed maximum height for a tower would be 50 feet.
Okay. How about then, let's move to something a little bit more dense, like a multifamily RM1?
Okay, so currently, it's 35-foot maximum for cell tower, 70-feet maximum for non-residential structure, so the proposal would be 70 feet for the tower.
And what could a non-residential structure be, I'm sorry, a water tower on the property or?
It depends on the zone. We would look at what uses are allowed in the zone, so I looked up the one for residential, my example happened to be a library, which would be a permitted use, and you could potentially have a library that's 50 feet, so the cell tower would be 50 feet comparable.
A religious facility could go in a residential zone, correct? A church or?
That one's a little different, it's a special use, so I hadn't looked it up as an example, but typically, we're just going from the section that says maximum height, and usually, there's a dwelling height, in this case, it's 35 feet. So, a tower under the current codes, no taller than a residence. So, we would be proposing that it would be the same as whatever non-residential height is allowed.
Okay, so a typical single-family, we're looking at a max of 50 feet inside that zone?
Right, that would be the proposal.
Okay.
Counselor Benars and then Counselor Dickey.
Thank you, I have actually two questions, Madam Mayor. First one has to do with dealing with the 14-day, I guess it's a public hearing portion. Can you speak to that? It was testified tonight that it was rather limiting to those groups that get together only once a month.
I understand the concern. We have Procedures Ordinance, Chapter 300, that governs the different comment periods and the time limits when we have to send out notice prior to a public hearing, and we're just recommending consistency with those and no changes.
So, it's consistent with other public hearings?
Yeah, this is not a, if I could, this is not a public hearing comment, this is a comment period for people to comment on the proposal, and then after that, there's an appeal period where if they want to, they could file an appeal on it. The reason we have these time limits in place is because overall, we're mandated to complete the process, make all final decisions within a period of time. We're mandated by state law for most land use applications of 120 days maximum, including any local appeals, and we're mandated under federal law, as Pamela said earlier, for 90 days or 150 days, depending on the proposal. So, we need to make sure that we allow for enough time for all of the process to play out, including any possible appeals, so we're not in violation of those mandated time limits.
It puts the city between a rock and a hard place, basically, because you've got to get that information in, you want to leave it open, but?
We have to be very cognizant of it and manage it well, yeah.
Okay, and the second question that I had had to do with putting the equipment underground. I've never seen one, maybe that's because they're underground, but how feasible is it to put this equipment that's underground? Some of the stuff, as I go to courthouse on South River Road, is quite large. I know they're not all that big, but?
Right, so, we had originally proposed a similar provision requiring undergrounding in certain circumstances, and in testimony at Planning Commission, we received a lot of comments from the industry saying that those types of installations are very difficult, they can be dangerous for the persons who are working on them.
Confine space.
They cost a lot more, and so there were a lot of issues that they raised, and that's why we didn't expand that provision beyond the historic. We did include in this Gross Ordinance, expanding it somewhat so that it would cover other areas where we require typically the undergrounding of utilities.
Again, not being overly restrictive on the, because of federal law, which is what we're backed up against, other communities aren't requiring this undergrounding of all cell tower equipment, is that correct?
Not all. I mean, everyone has a slightly different approach, it just depends on the jurisdiction, there's local jurisdiction and various opinions, so.
Thank you.
Counselor Dickey and then Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually had the same question as Counselor Benars about the 14-day comment period, but so as a follow-up to that, I am curious to know then, because, so as Mr. Gross just stated, that we're under a short timeframe to complete the process, so if a third-party review is enacted, how does that affect the timeframe? Does that extend the timeframe for doing the project? So, that would have to be done within that same period of time, so there would be that 14-day comment period, and then could you just explain that third-party review process? Because I think I heard you say that also has a comment period?
I believe the way it would work best would be if staff identifies a situation where we believe it's necessary, we'll start at the beginning by requesting the third-party review when we get the application in. With a lot of these also, for the adjustments and for the new towers and substantial changes to towers, the type-two, type-three applications will have pre-application conferences as well. So, we will have advanced knowledge at staff level of what's coming, and we could start discussing with the applicants at that point, the need for third-party review, and try to get a consensus among staff and the planning administrator and the community development director, so we can identify a lot of those situations upfront. If we miss something, if we keep the current language and it's not made mandatory, if staff misses something, then when we receive the comments that request that, we'd have another chance to enact that. And if we had someone who was essentially on notice to the city to provide those types of services, I think we could still meet the deadlines. I did want to clarify one thing, there's a couple of different periods of time, the 14-day comment period is for the applications that go through public comment but not public hearing. So, it's just, I think that Mr. Gross addressed that, but I just wanted to make sure. And then with the class-three, the type, the type-three applications with public hearing, we typically send notice at least 20 days in advance of the hearing, so there's slightly longer time for people to prepare for the public hearing, and then they can testify at a public hearing.
Yes, certainly.
So, and just to follow up then, I'm assuming this is like regular land use proceedings, if we miss the deadline, then it just goes through, is that correct? Or is there, what happens if we miss a deadline, we don't get?
Well, we don't ever miss the deadline, but if that ever happened, what would it mean for local things would be that the applicant could seek a writ and have the court issue the decision essentially.
I would just add to that, if I may, that we also would be required to pay attorney's fees, which is not an insignificant concern.
All right, Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, one of my main questions was regarding capacity, but having that already been addressed, question on the map that you showed in regards to those areas that wouldn't require a 300-foot variance request?
Yes.
A big chunk of that was the airport, you're not going to put a cell tower there, so that actually should come out of that as well, right?
Right, I didn't mention that, I had it in my notes, but, you know. So, a lot of the purple area would be airport, obviously, there are high restrictions there. A lot of the purple toward the river is Mento Brown Island, and then the other significant areas of purple would be north along Salem Parkway and those industrial areas, and then also the Mill Creek Corporate Center on the southeast side. And those are pretty far from residential, if we look at those on the map, but still, they would be available.
Are there further questions of staff? Counselor Dickey.
Thank you, yeah, I just, I thought of this and looking at the map kind of triggered. So, what, because we have a lot of unincorporated area within that map that you're showing there, what, how does this compare to Marion County's ordinance? Do you know?
I haven't evaluated theirs.
So, okay, all right, thanks.
All right, any further questions for staff?
[inaudible].
All right, hearing none, we'll now close the hearing. And Counselor Bennett, I would entertain a motion.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to keep the written record open on this public hearing until January 27.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Clem to keep the hearing open, the public comment hearing open until January 27. Was that what you just said?
Yes.
The public testimony?
For written, yeah.
For written testimony until January 27.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, this is, oop, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Okay. This is the materials, the ordinance, and all the other stuff we've received, I don't want to end up in one of those vote-for-it-and-you'll-find-out-what's-inside-it-later kind of situations, we've seen how that works out. But I, and I also think we received a lot of really interesting testimony tonight, a lot, a number of suggestions I hope we can see in writing in terms of potential amendments. And I think we all really deserve to give this a lot of thought, the impact on neighborhoods like the ones I represent, which are the older neighborhoods that are smaller lots, it is a 70-foot pine tree, or 50-foot, whatever, I'm not sure I even understand it yet, a plastic pine tree in your backyard, and within 30 feet of your house, a humming machine within 15 feet of your property, those are the kinds of things. I want to make sure I fully understand what the impact of this is, and I think in these already developed neighborhoods, it is substantial, but I want to make sure I understand that correctly. I don't want to just do a no because it doesn't make sense, I'd like to say no because there are problems, or yes because there are solutions.
Thank you very much. Other comments or questions? Counselor Nanki.
So, with the stat, or with the, the public hearing still open for written testimony, having had the mayor close the public hearing, will we still have the ability to ask questions of staff regarding said information, or do we need to?
You can always ask questions of staff.
Okay. Just to make sure that we knew where the process was going.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? The motion on the floor, as I have it noted, is to close the public hearing, the testimony, and keep it open for written testimony until January 27. All right, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Counselor Thomas, are you with us? Are you still on the line?
Yes, I am, I'm here.
She said aye.
And you voted aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much, all right. The motion passes unanimously, thank you. All right, we have two items for Special Orders of Business. One is 3.2B and C, pulled by Counselor Dickey. Counselor Dickey, would you, I'm sorry, would you like to make a motion?
I will move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move staff recommendation. Is there discussion? Yes.
Yes, I just had a question for staff about this, let me just pull it up here really quickly. My question was, this was just a dedication of a park, and there wasn't really much other information about that. I mean, I love park dedications, but I don't think this is the cutting the ribbon and having cake kind of park dedication, so I was hoping that you could explain that.
Thank you, Counselor Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. Yes, this is our standard format for any kind of property dedication. The reality is, is that this linear park is already in the ground, it already exists, it's already built, ribbon was cut many years ago. The issue here is that the land division that created that parcel was done correctly at the time, but it's not the way we do things today. The property owner is partitioning a much larger piece of property along Battle Creek and then creating, formally creating this parcel now. So, what you see before you is the dedication, which is kind of a step ahead of the, of the partitioning. That's, that's all it is. I apologize for the lack of information on there.
Okay, all right, then, so the motion on the floor was made by Counselor Dickey, was there a second?
Yes.
I'm sorry, thank you, by Counselor Benars.
And Mayor, I think we probably need to vote on these separately because they're two separate items.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, I think B is a street dedication, and C is actually the park property dedication. So, so they're part, they're part and parcel of the same partitioning, but yeah, I think you probably need to vote on them separately, but just to be clear, B is Stub Street Rite of Way dedication, and C is the, is the linear park dedication.
Okay, all right. Well, then, Counselor Dickey, would you like to restate your motions so they're separate?
Sure, so for 3.2B, I move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Dickey, seconded by Counselor Benars to move staff recommendation for item 3.2B. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And Counselor Dickey, the second one, please.
For 3.2C, I move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Dickey and seconded by Counselor Benars to move staff recommendation for item 3.2C. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed signify by saying nay. All right, motion carries unanimously, thank you. And our second item is item 3.3B, which was pulled by Counselor Nanki. Do you care to make a motion, Counselor Nanki?
I care to.
Okay.
I would move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Bennett to move staff recommendation. Is there discussion?
Yes, there is.
All right.
And first off, let me just say that I see emergency and risk management personnel here, which was not my intention whatsoever. I'd expressed the, the reason why I wanted to pull this, which is to identify my displeasure with the fact that we give money to the federal government only to beg for it back after they take big chunks of it away from us, and I feel as a state, we could manage these kind of funds if they were to stay within our municipal boundaries of the state of Oregon. So, it was just to make that comment and not to take up time that's valuable to our staff, so I will try to enunciate that more clearly, and hopefully, we can not have them have to spend their evening down here with us.
They're happy to do that, Pam.
All right, thank you. Then, the motion on the floor by Counselor, by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Bennett is to move staff recommendation.
Correct.
All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. I'm going to take a second, now that we have highlighted and recognized that Roger Stevens is here with us, I wanted to say thank you to you and to all the volunteers, the cert volunteers, I knew from reading emails from the city manager and Public Works Director that this weekend, that our staff and volunteers were alerted for possible high winds and possible tree down, tree limbs being in the way, or other problems in the, in the rite of way, and other safety issues. I want to thank you for alerting all the volunteers and having them ready. I assume, having heard nothing, that we did not have any big calamity, is that correct?
We did avoid big problems, and we're very appreciative of that, but we use all of these circumstances for training, and so it's always good to make sure that we can get a hold of people and they're ready if they need to be.
Wonderful, thank you. Thanks for being with us this evening, thank you for your work. All right. In your council packets, please note information reports that were available, and if you have any questions, are any of those items that counselors wanted particularly more information, or wanted staff to come back to us on any information? All right, none. We'll move on to ordinances, to the first reading. Would the recorder please introduce the item?
Ordinance Bill Number 1-14 relating to automobile racetrack licenses, amending SRC 30.105.
All right, is there a motion? Counselor Dickey.
I'll move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Dickey and seconded by Counselor Benars to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? Counselor Dickey and then I think Counselor Nanki, did you have your hand up? No, all right, Counselor Dickey.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let you all know how this came about, when we changed, when we revised our SRC last fall, and we brought, we kind of cleaned up the licensing chapter of our SRC, one of the things that we did was change the racing time to have to end at 10 o'clock, it previously ended at 11 o'clock, which would have been fine, except for we have a company that- fine, except for we have a company that does racing out at the fairgrounds, who was set to start their season just a few weeks after we made that decision, who, they were completely unaware of this change, and so it was very problematic, because they had their schedule set and that kind of thing. So, thank the community development staff, Brady Rogers and his staff, for kind of hearing this concern, working with me, and putting a nice compromise so that they can start an hour earlier, rather than having to go an hour later than this requires. And an hour earlier means they start at 11:00 AM, rather than, you know, 12:00, so it's still not that early. The Neighborhood Association is aware of the change, so I just appreciate everyone's support on this.
Thank you, all right. Any further discussion? All right, the motion before us is to, to advance the item, Ordinance Bill Number 1-14, to second reading. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
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 Opposed, say "nay." Motion carries unanimously, thank you. We have no items for second reading, and our final order of business is a mayor's motion for, to request funding for the State of the City video, which will be produced in order to supplement the State of the City speech that will be presented on February 19th, to the joint meetings of the Salem Chamber Commerce, Salem Rotary, and Salem City Club. I'll speak to this item. Last year, for the first time, the city of Salem created a video which highlighted the relationship between businesses and government agencies and the city of Salem. It was rather an experiment to see how that type of communication, as part of the report on the State of the City, might be received, and we found that it was well-received, we found that the video that was produced has a shelf life, and we put it on our website and made that available to businesses that were considering being, locating in the city of Salem, and further used it to simply communicate about the relationship between the city and our various partners. And this year, I come back to you again to request funding for the item, and I also want to make a note that now having found that the video was well-received by the audiences that day, and has, has been well-received since, that it's something that we will probably make as a regular part of our State of the City address, although the video can certainly change from time to time, as the interest of the community is, is there or is not there, and also, as the subject matters may change, we may want to highlight specific activities as opposed to relationships. It will just depend upon some of the things that occur in, in the city during the period of time between the videos. In the future, also, we will take the opportunity, planning earlier, to talk with other vendors for the video this year. We went directly to Allied Video for their bid, because they did produce the video in a very short and timely manner last year, in a very high quality, and that's what we were looking for again this year. So with that, my request for funding is in your binder, and the item, under Mayor's item... I don't know if I can find it here, in my own binder, is to fund for $4,625, and that would come out of the existing city budget to create the five-to-six-minute video. So I would so move that the money be allocated to support the production of the video. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by myself, Mayor Peterson, and seconded by Counselor Clem, to fund the video from the existing city budget. Any further discussion? Counselor Benars.
I have, have had several conversations with other members of the council, and one of the concerns, not really concern, I support the video, period. I think it's a good thing, it shows off this community. In, in the four, five-to-six minutes that it's going to have, it's going to give, well, words speak a lot louder, I mean, sorry, pictures speak a lot louder than words in this case, and I really do support the, the video. My question has to do with, we have a very fine video production system within CCTV, is it not capable of producing the kind of video that, that would be able to be used on this kind of situation?
Well, as I said, in, in the future, we are going to have time to entertain proposals and to talk with other vendors. This year, we simply didn't have the time to do that, and didn't go forward to do that.
Well, it's my request, I would love to see, go to CCTV, if, if, if you think you can get the same product, or better product.
And that's really the crucial question, and that's one of the things that we'll be doing toward next year, in better time, will be to explore the quality and the, and the variety of services that are out there.
Thank you.
Certainly. Counselor Thomas, did you have a question or a comment?
That was my comment as well. When we talked about this last year, when this came up, that was my concern, and I, I believe that CCTV does have the adequate resources to produce a really good quality video. They do have state-of-the-art equipment that would accommodate whatever the needs are for this video. They do a lot of different things in the community, they video the, the high school games, they do a lot of the city events that we have. I know some of the things are not scripted, but there are some things that are scripted. And I would just like to know what the timeline, when did, when did you figure out that you wanted to do this? And would that given CCTV enough time to pull something like that together?
I, I can't speak to the timing that CCTV would need, I just know that from our experience last year, we began the process at about the same time as we have this year, and it's a very short timeframe, and we were assured with Allied Video that they would be able to produce within that short period of time, and so that was the decision that was made. Okay, other questions, comments? I think Counselor Nanki, and then Counselor Clem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, and I'm trying to remember the conversation from last year, whether or not it was going to be a one-time-only thing, or we were going to actually pursue talking with, with CCTV. And, and I can't quite recall right now, but I, I know that having family members and dealing with the CCTV folks a lot, it'd be dependent on who was doing the editing and final production work, but I know that many of their personnel are well-equipped to do that, and it might actually, I don't know how much they actually do for sponsorships, but I think they could probably use the money as well, and we could potentially get it significantly cheaper than, you know, a thousand bucks a minute for finished product as well, depending on how we'd go about doing that.
Yeah. Okay, well noted. Counselor Clem, you had your hand up?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. I, I agree with others that CCTV would be a great source to do it. I think, I'd also want to know from CCTV for next year, you know, if they could do it without interfering with their other public support work that they take on, a lot of their volunteers too, so, you know, I, I think the discussion maybe starts in the fall to really open it up with CCTV, and then, then I'd be comfortable understanding that it didn't take away from some of the other important work that they do as well, so.
Good point.
A lot of volunteers, and we need to, we need to embrace them, but it's got to fit into their other work as well. So I wholly support this motion, let's get it done, it was beautiful last year. It's, that, that video, as I'm told, has been used by companies that are wanting to expand here, and we've, we've recently had three expansions, so I, I think that video's value is, is hundredfold of its cost, so, and we could spend the same amount with CCTV. So, let's get the video done.
All right. There's a motion on the floor, in favor of, those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say "nay."
Nay.
All right, one negative vote by Counselor Thomas, and motion carries. Thank you. And I see no further business to come before the council?
Is there not public comment?
Oh, we didn't do the public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I raced past public comment, I do apologize, everyone, please remain in your seats, and it looks like Ian Johnson followed by Ron Sturba, and I do apologize to both of you. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, I understand the, the push to get out of your meeting, so.
Oh, we still got another meeting after this.
Oh, okay. Don't feel so bad.
We're meeting wonks, remember?
Sure, sure. I'll still keep it brief, though.
Okay.
My name is Ian Johnson, and I'm here, the Chair of the Northeast Salem Community Association, and my address is 1495 Evergreen Avenue, northeast here in Salem, 97301. Tonight, I'm here to speak on behalf of the neighborhood concerning the redevelopment of the state-owned North Campus. NESCA really does sincerely believe that the sale and redevelopment of the state-owned North Campus will create jobs and substantial tax revenue for the city, and will invigorate investment in our community, as any good investment does, but only if our local and state-elected leaders take an active role in the redevelopment process. In anticipation of the February legislative session, we've been, and DAS's ongoing efforts to identify a developer, we created a nine-point recommendation for the development of the site at our December meeting. We believe that our approach preserves both the character and livability of the neighborhood, and provides valuable amenities for future development, some of which were actually called for in the state-sponsored report. Our recommendations, with an explanation of our positions, were forwarded to each of you by email through staff last Friday, so it should be in your mailboxes. We will be asking the Department of Administrative Services to include these items in the request for proposals to be issued by the state later this spring, and we're currently going to find out soon if it was included in the report to the legislature for the February session. Throughout our process, all parties said that they wanted the project to be successful, and while NESCA sincerely appreciates that sentiment, still unaddressed is the fact that North Campus site is incredibly challenging and an expensive site to develop, requiring millions of dollars in permitting and utility work before construction can begin. As many of you know, there's inadequate sewer, inadequate water, inadequate roads, it's simply inadequate. This is a recipe for disappointment, if not outright failure, as we've seen with several state development projects in the past. However, the sale of this, sale of this site is a political process that may be influenced by the direct action of Salem citizens and selected leadership by appealing to our state legislators. While the legislature does have a responsibility to balance the budget, they too have a duty and desire to create jobs and livable communities through, for their constituents. The successful development of this site hinges on close collaboration between the state, city, and residents to provide an attractive mix of real incentives that will attract the right developer for this challenging project. NESCA understands our city leaders have begun this process, and we certainly applaud it, and we ask you to redouble your efforts. We implore our leaders to break the mold of past failures to create a success that our state, our city, and our neighborhood certainly deserve. We invite each of you to our January 21st meeting, and we expect to have members of DAS there to give an update, and currently, a couple members, members of our state legislative delegation, should that work out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a quick question, and the location for your meeting, your Neighborhood Association meeting is?
Fresh Start Market on Center Street.
Oh, all right, okay, fine, thank you. That's right next to the Marion County Juvenile Facilities?
Yes, just don't park in their parking lot, they threatened to tow us last time, so.
Threatened to...
Yeah, start towing cars, so.
Oh, oh, no, okay, just park right in the parking lot around the building.
Yes, please.
Okay, all right. Are there questions or comments from counselors? All right, thank you for coming down, appreciate your testimony. Ron Sturba.
Mayor, I was going to ask you if I can get a chance to have the lights dim for a demonstration I have this evening? Not at this time, but in about two minutes into my presentation.
Well, we'll see what we can do about that, I'm not making any big promises.
Okay, so, tell me what you need to do.
I lost most of my fans here, they've left for the evening.
All right.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, counselors, and city staff, and as I start my research here, I want to thank you for attending the fourth in a series of three-minute conversations by a concerned citizen. I want to start with the peak in our LED lighting program here that we have in the city of Salem, it's really taken me long ways into Ida, International Dark Sky. I have a research topics, and they're authors of health effects to humans concerning types of lighting, and I'm going to leave that here for the staff. It talks about the smaller pupil size when the light is white to blue, it talks about the aging eye, the ocular transparency is reduced, health effects, circadian rhythm suppresses the production of melatonin, and breast cancer. These researches are in a file here that I will present to the city recorder, and also I want to talk about the lighting here in Salem, it's rather interesting, because I found out the light fixtures that they put up, and working with the Public Utilities Commission, they go out 80 degrees out this way, basically 20 degrees this way, it's a straight light, light fixture, and they're using it at four-way intersections, which means two streets get light, two streets don't, causes dark spots, dark areas, and it's one of the major concerns of this type of LED lighting. I'd like to see the city go into a full cutoff lighting, light fixture. We have LED lighting, this is approximately the 4,000 series Kelvin range, and this is what you're looking at when you see the straight lights now. What we need to do is to go to light that is diffused. That's diffused, you couldn't, you wouldn't want to go home and take the lampshades off your lights, because you wanted more light, you want consistent, equal lighting, and that's what the city needs, and unfortunately, I think PGE sold us a blanket set of lights for everything, and it doesn't work in my neighborhood. I got black spots in my neighborhood at street corners, and I can't see the people, and I've had people come to me and say, "Thanks for standing up there and speaking about it." And the PUC's been helpful in, with the model numbers, and I was surprised to find out that the East Salem District...
Mr. Sturba, your five, your three minutes is up.
Can we put like a clock up here?
Well, I'm afraid your time is up. I would like to ask counselors, are there any questions by any of the counselors? All right. Counselor Nanki.
Staff had emailed us last year saying that there would be a staff report coming forth relatively soon in regards to LED-type stuff, and I didn't know if Mr. Sturba had been made aware of that, or, or not either.
There is a staff report coming at, for your next meeting.
Okay.
An informational staff report.
Wonderful, all right. Thank you very much. Any, any further questions or comments for Mr. Sturba? All right, thank you very much, we appreciate your appearance and waiting to the very end.
I'll be back next meeting.
All right, we'll be here, all right. Thank you very much, and with that, we are adjourned.
You won't have to wait till the end of the meeting.